I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my first time. I'm starting to lose that evening. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Councilmember Lasky.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Keck.
Here.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Community development director.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Role call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comment on agenda-related items. Any citizens with correspondence to be distributed to council should provide items to city clerk prior to the start of the meeting or after meeting has adjourned, limited to five minutes. Ready? Okay. Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, balance sheet, quarterly financial update, quarterly investment report, consideration of ordinance 25-03 to amend Chapter 867 recreational marijuana of the city of Manistee, Michigan codified ordinances, consideration of Lake Shore by Lake Shore music event date correction. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of entering into agreement with the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts and authorize additional finance assistance. On January 10th, 2025, in accordance with the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts, the RRCA 2016 contract with the city, they provided 90-day notice to terminate the contract. The RRCA and city hoped to negotiate a new lease agreement to continue operations at the Ramsdale Theater. The city manager, mayor, and Mayor Protem met with the RRCA representatives over several months to negotiate the new agreement. Part of the agreement includes additional immediate financial support in the amount of $22,176 for a mini-split and elevator repairs and optional support through the end of the city's fiscal year. At this time, council could take action to approve the agreement with the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the document. In addition, amend the current year budget to provide financial assistance in the amount of $22,176. Is there a motion?
I will make that motion.
Support.
Any discussion?
I think we should discuss a little bit. I think it should be brought out that people want to know. There was a little bit of talk at one time of what the city's involvement was and did we support the Ramsdale, and I think there was a little confusion over that, and I think people are in support of the Ramsdale. The city does own the building, and I think we need to go over a little bit whoever, maybe someone who worked on it, go over exactly what we have a little bit, just so people know or people watching would know what terms we entered in on this contract.
Absolutely. So, in meeting with the Ramsdale, what we proposed to do, we had $75,000 allocated in the proposed budget. We proposed to utilize that, so that same amount for repairs and maintenance and utilities. In addition, out of a current-year budget amendment, they needed some support for a couple repairs that were underneath that $7,500 threshold where the city would pay. That included a mini-split repair, also elevator repairs. It's actually a new mini-split that had to go in, and then $10,000 in operational support. In return, the RRCA agreed to add some additional regional entities to their board, Westmore Community College, the Manistee County Community Foundation, and also Manistee County. We've asked with the additional support the council and the city would provide that residents get a significant discount on tickets for RRCA shows, so the first three shows at least 25%, and then after that, we'll work with them on a rate that's agreeable to both parties. I think also they're going to advertise which shows are RRCA events and which ones are externally sponsored, so people are aware when they have control of the ticket pricing. And then also for the, we're looking at having them take on the bookkeeping July 1, 2026. So they'll have kind of a year to transition that. We're also going to be meeting in August to go over that resident discount. We'll be meeting in March to kind of go over, see how the utility bills, the maintenance is going, and kind of see the impacts of the new agreement and how it's working out for both parties. That's kind of the main thing. I did receive a couple just minor edits from the RRCA this afternoon that communicated with my office. I sent an email out to the council, and I can just, I think any motion, if you're agreeable to them, would include just a couple of these items. So their representative would be their board president as opposed to the RRCA director. Another minor change was just with us asking them to cover any utilities above the three-year average that we provide, a monthly utility report in a mutually agreed-upon format. So I talked to Mr. Bradford. We're happy to do that and to do that easily. And then just clarifying, even though it does say upon signing of the agreement, authorizing that budget amendment and to cover those, and then also that $10,000 payment out of fund balance. Now, Mayor, Mayor Protem, did I miss anything? I think that was kind of...
Oh, I think you hit it. Pay the interest too. Don't we pay the interest also on the loan for the air conditioning?
Oh, you're talking about the Johnson Controls? Yes, so that's part of it, the preventative maintenance, and in the agreement, it's specified what maintenance is. I can pull that up for you. So, yeah, maintenance of the building, building systems, including but not limited heating, cooling, electrical plumbing, annual preventative maintenance, and annual inspections. So I would think it would be that payment for the...
But I think to clarify, I think Councilmember Lasky is asking about the installment purchase note that the city has to pay off the HVAC system. That's entirely the city's responsibility and all the past...
Yes, it is. But that's also support. So we are, I think we...
Okay. I apologize. So that isn't part of building maintenance, but it is something we will be doing.
I guess one thing I'm going to find interesting, because the Ramsdale group came because they couldn't make ends meet, which is really hard to do in that kind of what they do in that old building, the citizen, the community discount, city of Manistee discount, because how that's going to work, because it actually will cut into the revenue. So anyways, I think you understand what I'm trying to say. It's going to be, I'm glad you're going to be revisiting that, because I know the idea...
Yeah, it could be counterintuitive.
Yes, exactly. It might not make logical sense.
Right. So as long as we're revisiting, I guess that's something we can always keep open.
And I think they did have a very sizable senior discount, 25% or so, and this is just, I don't think it's fair if the residents and the city's spending taxpayer dollars that someone from another county outside or someone in nearby city gets a deeper discount than the residents, but...
I think one more thing too, we are supporting the Ramsdale, which is good, with our money, but I think we also need to support them with our attendance at their events. They have good events, they're cheaper than anywhere else that you attend a similar concert. I think they have three going up, coming up this weekend, the following weekend, and they have the U.S. Army Band, and it's free. I mean, and that's an outstanding event, and I think that we have to, as long as we're supporting it with our money, we need to take it on as a city and continue to support it with our attendance.
I just have one thing. The $10,000 payment, my notes are different. I thought it was going on the 2026, like, starting next fiscal year.
I tried to keep the $75,000, the same commitment without amending the budget.
Okay.
So that was the idea.
Okay. That was my only question. Okay. Anybody else?
Amending the next budget.
Okay. Do you have something, Lainey? No? Okay. Heather, would you please take role?
If I can interject.
Oh, sorry.
If we could have a motion to amend to include the contract revisions that they just sent over today.
Yes.
So if the original motion can make, maker can just amend to...
Yep, I'll make that motion to amend the contract with those couple of provisions that they brought out this morning, this afternoon.
I support that.
And I will second that.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the amend, the amendment first. Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
And now, vote on the original motion as amended. Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of warding contract, the refuse collection and disposal, and curbside recycling. The city publicly advertised for refuse collection and disposal alongside with curbside recycling bids. One bid was received from Republic Service. The final bid is in line with the fiscal year 2026 budget numbers for refuse costs. The budget also includes rates for curbside recycling program to comply with the state law, eliminating the cost for the co-mingled recycling bin and the DPW overtime from the PCA cardboard trailer. At this time, council could take action to approve a five-year contract with Republic Service and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the documents. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
When, we should, I think, tell, when is this recycling actually going to begin? I know it's mandated, so everybody knows that, but...
Correct, yep. So the Eagle set the deadline to have curbside recycling twice a month in our, in urbanized areas defined by the U.S. Census of over five. So that, that's to take place January 1, 2026. The proposal that Republic provided in their bid was to start July 1.
Nice.
I saw that, and I, and I think we'll do a little education, Bill, we're going to be, prior to that, so people know exactly what can recycle. I think my question, what was the number that we're going to pay on for the recycling, and does it have to be the same as the garbage pickup?
So there's different rates in terms of tonnage for, and so that's, I can bring that up in the contract. There's some assumptions in terms of the amounts. I think AJ, I think the assumption was about 250 tons of recycling. We have about 220, or it was 270, but significantly less recycling tonnage than the refuse. We have about 220 a month in refuse. So let me just pull that...
I saw that they can change, that they can change the rate on 60-day notice. Can we change the rate if we, like, on the recycling, if we find that people aren't all using the recycling? I think we have a lot of second homes in the area that the people, we have a couple in our street that, one of them hasn't been there since September. So she's not going to put out recycling. There's seven within our little couple-block area that people don't full-time live in. So how does that work? So the tonnage is less, but then we're charging 660 for each...
Resident.
Resident that we pick up at, so...
Yep, so that's to cover the assumed amounts of tonnage, but yes, I would think that at some point, we'd have, I don't know that it would be this year, but maybe next year, we could adjust it if we're noticing trends in a certain manner. But the, the charge, that $70 a ton, that's passed on to Republic from the recycling process facility, so they don't really have control over that. So that's not something we can control, but you're right, the tonnage could vary, but I don't know, AJ, if you want to come up and talk about how you came up with that?
I'm more than happy to come up and answer any questions you ask. So you're asking, I guess, asking, yeah, what?
I'm, I mean, we're going to give everybody a recycling bin, or is it going to be a full trash can with the lid?
Yes, yes.
And so, there's a lot of second homes in Manistee that if we find out that they're not putting out recycling, so that then the tonnage would decrease, of course.
Yes.
And, you know, are we still going to charge every resident that 660 if we find, you know, people aren't utilizing it?
We did anticipate that with the recycling service collection charges. You see, you would, we're going to run the entire city residential base, municipal solid waste collection fee is much higher than a recycling collection fee. That's just the cost to run the city, a truck to run the, every street, every part of the city.
Right.
So with the number being much less, we're anticipating there to be some that aren't utilizing it.
Okay.
And that ref, that is an exact reflection in the rate. It's going to take us less time to run the recycle route, thus bringing a much less number to, to run the city, because we do anticipate some are not going to participate. And so the, the collection number that is presented here in the monthly rate does consider, not everybody's, that's why it's less.
Okay.
It's going to take us less time.
What is that rate again that we base that on, the pickup rate against?
The monthly rate for the collection, and the tons are going to, you know, be hand-in-hand with participation. If participation is low, this recycle processing charge, charge from the recycling facility is going to be the last. Does that help answer, or am I not going the right direction? I mean, we, I know where you're coming from, is that, hey, we're going to charge a resident $6, $6.50 a month, and they're not using it.
Are you charging everybody 650?
660.
660 that has a, already a blue dumpster canister?
This is an addition.
This number was built to provide everybody in every residential home in the city with recycling service. And a cart.
Okay. Can you opt out of it?
That is going to be up to the city if they would like to go down that road. The number we provided is to provide everybody the service. And so we're going to...
I'm just wondering if you can opt, I mean, if you still get charged for it, but if you opt out of getting the...
Yeah, correct. If someone says, I'm going to kick, I'm going to burn this thing, get it out of my yard, yeah, you could remove it, they're still going to get charged, the monthly rate from the city, I'm assuming, but if they don't want to...
I'm just wondering, I'm just thinking, because if you have, like, there's a couple units on the north side that are, like, four units, and they have four trash dumpsters, then they're going to have four recycling bins? Like, where are we going to, the whole town's going to look like a recycling...
They're going to have multiple carts at...
Yeah, and some of those 60-foot lots without a garage.
So, I mean, if someone wants to opt out of the, this service, and they say, I do not want to recycle, I do not want a recycle cart, we're not going to force them to have a cart and force them to recycle. At that point, we would, you know, work together on removing the cart. The monthly charge of the city wouldn't be decreased at all. If 50 residents decide, I don't want this cart, does that number change? It doesn't, but we can remove it.
Make the route.
We still have to drive around it to every location, and so that's how that number was derived. If someone wants, does not want the service, by all means, we will work with them in not having a cart there.
Okay. What's, what is the number, though, of the units that you pick up in Manistee, or where do you base your...
The numbers were based on residential homes. I know in my annual report, I do provide some numbers that were a little off, but it's close to 3,000 residential...
Units.
Carts.
Carts.
Yes, correct.
Anybody else?
No, I'm just excited at the prospect of, I think if people have their own cart, they're more likely to recycle and really take, be good stewards of this beautiful watershed area that we have. And, you know, no offense to our current service, but collecting all your things in the garage and hoping you can make it on a Saturday, you know, at the school, we've had recycling, and it takes one good windstorm, which we've had eight, and...
But who's counting?
But, you know, it just, we, for each person in our community to take responsibility for keeping our town clean and environmentally responsible, I just think this is, it's long overdue. And I appreciate the bid being in such a fashion that it encourages consumers to recycle.
It does, and you're following the direction of the state. I mean, the state is moving towards a different path of materials management planning, and the city of Manistee is going to be ahead of it, in a good way. So it absolutely is doing the right, right thing.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I make a point?
Absolutely.
So, this is an enterprise fund. The refuse fund is an enterprise fund. So the rates that the residents are charged are equal to what cost we incur. So if people convert more to recycling, it reduces their, their tonnage, which is more expensive to dispose of, and Ed goes through those numbers every year, and the rate increases, or whether he holds them flat, are just based on what we experienced last year and what the current, you know, projected costs are. So the more people do for themselves, the more they recycle, the more they reduce their waste, the cheaper it gets, or at least it doesn't get as expensive in the future. And so to Councilman Lasky's question, if we start seeing a trend in that way, well, that helps to keep those rates kind of in check.
Well, I hope that's part of our educational plan.
Absolutely, yeah. That's why I wanted to come up and state that since it's on TV, yeah.
And it said glass, right? I thought we weren't going to take glass, but now glass seemed to be on.
The recycling facility in Traverse City has started to accept glass again. They used to, they stopped accepting, now they're accepting again. So they do have a second, an outlet for, to recycle glass, and so it is going to be part of the recycling program here for the city, which I know a lot of people are excited to hear.
That's huge.
When I did the recycling presentation, I, at the building over there, I heard multiple people say, I'm driving wherever to get rid of it. And, and I also heard you question, you know, education is extremely important. Contaminated recycling is not good recycling. I think a big thing that's going to help is the flyers we're going to put on every cart as we deliver them. I mean, someone could not know this is even coming, and they have a cart in their yard, and then what's this about? They see a cart, and there's a flyer, and it tells them all about what is recyclable, you know, some avenues to go check more information, Recycling Simplified, hey, if you go to the website here, there's more information. On the backside, it's going to give you your collection schedule. I mean, a lot of education is going to be put right there. I know we talked about call blasts, you know, where we've already been provided numbers just for the past weekend event. I heard all about it. It wasn't supposed to go that way, but I think it got the message across. So participation rate for that event, by the way.
Yes, it was.
I know I sent Bill some information here earlier today, and it was a good event. And so if, just a couple calls like that can spark a lot of talk, talk is what you'd like to see. If you get some of those on recycling, again, not two days in a row, I think it starts some conversation as well, and I think it'll help.
I think, Kyle, you can help with that too, with the education, the newspaper, and I know he will probably, so.
Yeah.
I'll make up.
Education is big, but I think the flyers are going to help a lot, the information on the city's website, some call blasting. I don't think it's terribly difficult to look at this and go, okay, this is what's recyclable. If it's not on this list, it's not recyclable. It should go in the trash container.
Okay. Anybody else? No. Thanks, AJ. Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of adopting the 2025-2026 Budget and Capital Improvement Plan and approving the Downtown Development Authority proposed budget for fiscal year 2025-2026. Under Section 7-4 of the Charter, the annual budget must be adopted before May 15 of each year. The budget has been subject to multiple discussions and a public hearing. Additionally, the city of Manistee is required by the state statute to approve the budget of the Downtown Development Authority, DDA, before it can be adopted by the DDA Board. The DDA's proposed budget was presented to city council at the April 1, 2025 city council regular meeting. If approved by city council, the DDA Board must still hold a public hearing on their budget and vote to adopt it. This agenda item will include two separate motions, one for the city 2025-2026 budget and capital improvement plan, and one for the DDA proposed budget. At this time, city could take, the city council could take action to adopt a resolution approving the 2025-2026 budget and capital improvement plan. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
I think we should discuss a little bit. Next year, I think we should have a, maybe Ed prepared the budget was good, but I, being new myself, and every year we do have new people, and I do understand accounting, but I think that I would have liked to have seen another study session on it and just go a little bit more. I know the department heads, they all went over it, but I think the council, if we, you know, if we could have just spent one more study session on it. And the study session we had, Mr. Stoneman was also presenting, and so did Mark Sandsted at that one. I wish we could have one just on the budget. So just a suggestion for next year, that I think that it would be helpful.
I guess the, we received a draft budget, and to me, that was kind of a misnomer, because basically, nothing has changed at all from the draft despite a study session and questions and input. I guess that was kind of disappointing, would be the term I would use. I was a little surprised that some of the groups who asked for allocations were required to jump through additional hoops and kind of justify the request, but then there were other groups that weren't held to the same standard. So, you know, I'm not sure why that happened either, so...
Like what groups?
Well, for example, the area youth center, you know, there were additional scrutiny...
Well, it's because they asked for more money, that's why.
Okay, so that's the answer?
Well, yeah, they asked for more money than everybody else did.
So if you asked the same, so then for the Ramsdale...
Well, yeah, because we wanted to know why they were asking for additional funds.
Okay.
The same with the Ramsdale, why they were asking for additional funds.
I thought they asked for a change in the management agreement.
And additional funds.
Well, that was the original request. Okay, that answers the question.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. At this time, council could take action to approve the Downtown Development Authority's proposed budget for fiscal year 2025-2026. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of decertifying North Street. Research has indicated that North Street, commonly referred to as North Water Street, is privately owned and does not have a public right-of-way. The segment is shown on the city's current Michigan Department of Transportation Act 51 map and should be corrected in accordance with finding, findings and past practice. The segment is recommended to be removed from the city's Act 51 map. At this time, council could take action to approve a resolution for decertifying 544, 544 feet of North Street, six, south of Sixth Avenue. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
I guess I would like to know, I know, Bill, you've had discussions with them. Kind of give us a synopsis of how that, what happened.
So in 2018, the city found, did an audit of the different streets in the, in the city that were, you know, potentially private property. So in general, it appears that there had been some properties or some streets on the map that were private property. I was asked to look into this property or this road by a council member. Looking into it, found out it was one of those types of streets that was on the map that we shouldn't be receiving state funds for because it appears to not be public right-of-way. So just kind of, it appears there's an error in this, in some of these and we have to correct them when we find them.
I guess what I was looking for is, I know you talked to these, how these people involved.
Yes.
And how that discussion went. I mean, I know we got the legal opinion regarding, you know, right-of-ways and highways and usage and so on. And how did, you know, the one-on-one discussions you took the time to do with them? Did they understand, I guess, what, you know?
I think they, we talked through kind of that they have a right to access their property. There are probably some other avenues they can explore to get what they need, but the city was limited on our legal ways that we could go about.
Because they wouldn't give up their right-of-way or anything?
Right. There's certain criteria for public roads and it didn't appear that we could advance any of those to, on this case.
I agree with that statement. You know, the roads don't meet the criteria under Michigan law as public roads. And Act 51 requires the city to have an accurate map as to what is or is not a public road. So decertifying only really has the practical effect of making sure your Act 51 map matches what we believe to be the public roads. Doesn't affect the underlying property rights or anything like that.
Do we think we have it all corrected now? Or are there still some that we haven't looked at? I mean, other than the ones on the agenda tonight, are there, in addition, any more sitting out there?
I know Mr. McCula could probably answer that. These two were brought to my attention to look into and that's how I found them.
Yeah, we honestly, probably five, six years ago, I went looking for every opportunity I had to correct things. And we probably had eight or nine that we found. Most of them were the little stubs from River Street down to the river that we've plowed snow, we maintain, we've got pavement, but they weren't on the map. And so there were some that were on, some that were not, that were not. Manastee Area Public Schools, when they built the new high school, they built a driveway from Oak and 12th Street into, all the way out to Tamrac Street. They built it to city standards, but that was actually part of the school driveway. It's the only way that they could use bond money to do that. So later on, they kind of gifted that 66-foot right-of-way and those improvements to the city. So that's an instance where we added it. We had a section of Harvard Lane that was probably back in that 2018 timeframe where we had the same kind of situation. So this one and the next one that came before you, we didn't go really looking for. They just, they came to us by different issues. The next one is Hospital Hill, is what we all know it as. That one, we actually budgeted money to rebuild that two years ago and the engineers started surveying it and said, "There's no right-of-way here." So then, we then moved on to the legal status of what should we do? So I couldn't tell you if there's any more, but I'm responsible for signing that map and submitting it to the state of Michigan. And each year I do, I sign that with the understanding that everything that we're certifying is correct and legal. When we find them, we've got to make those changes.
There's that little one, parallel to Cypress, perpendicular to the access to High Tech Dental there.
Yes.
Is that a road or is that High Tech Dental's property?
The city still has right-of-way, planted right-of-way in there. So that is part of ours and in fact, that's part of the overlay project that we've got coming up this summer.
Okay.
So we're going to overlay that, but yeah, we're responsible for that portion.
So that's on our Act 51 map?
It is.
Okay, and it's rightly ours.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Jeff. Anybody else? Heather, would you please take a role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of decertifying 14th Street. Research has indicated that 14th Street, commonly referred to as Casiosco Street and Hospital Hill, is privately owned and does not have any public right-of-way. The segment is shown on the city's current Michigan Department of Transportation Act 51 map and should be corrected in coordinates with findings and past practice. The segment, the segment is recommended to be removed from the city's Act 51 map. At this time, council could take action to approve a resolution for decertifying 888, 888 feet of 14th Street to Care Center Drive. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I will second that.
Any discussion on this one?
I, I guess I wonder, based on the legal opinion that we received in January and the email we got, I got it today, but it's dated 2/28. It states that it is clear case of, it is not a clear case of highway by user. But that, that road is used by the community a lot. And I know we have, I saw when I came in, an email from someone and I've gotten notifications from other people. And I guess, I know you sent the gentleman, the owner, an email and it seemed to me like he'd be okay with allowing a right-of-way there. And I think it'd be really detrimental to that area and the people who live in that area and the community overall, especially in light of the upcoming construction.
So I have talked to him several times ever since they bought that building. As of this moment, it is private property. The city does have over $65 million worth of roads that need to be reconstructed. That one in particular is a million dollars to reconstruct.
Well.
And so it's, it's just a matter of, you know, we'd have to take it on and that would be something I'm not recommending at this time. We did run some traffic counts. I know you've received that email. Back in November, we're finding traffic counts of very minimal compared to other properties, so, or other roads. So it's not, it's not as heavily utilized, I think, as that email was stating.
Well, probably because it's in such rough shape. People don't want to damage their cars. I mean, the city's been maintaining that probably for over 100 years. And, you know, as the legal opinion stated, you know, it kind of fits a lot of the guidelines. So, you know, I understand the need to save money, but I see other ways we can save money without punishing the taxpayers and taking things away from them. Because that's what we're doing.
So what that property is.
The road.
I get it, yeah, I'm following you.
But it would be, it's a private road, so we would take tax.
The gentleman is willing, you know, to do whatever the city would like. I mean, he understands closing it because it's unsafe in its current condition. But if we, he's willing to give us a right-of-way if we want a right-of-way. Or an easement or whatever. He basically will do whatever.
Well, he could give us an easement, that doesn't mean that we need to repave it.
Correct. But we don't have to close it either. I mean, I think we'd be good with bringing up the asphalt and leaving gravel. You know, truthfully, it's just the idea, it'd be a road you're losing that.
It might be safety too. I mean, whatever goes into that building, and I don't know what is going in now, if that's the ultimate end-use. You know, that building has changed over the years. So in that area up there has not declined in population. I mean, it seems.
It's only grown.
Yeah.
And it, it kind of seems like a short, short-term fix. Because, okay, now visualize, we close the road and all those people from Horizon Point, they're going to, you know, to get to Family Fair and so on. They're going to go down Maywood, down 15th, down Vine, up 12th. You know, that's going to be a lot more expensive to take, fix those roads, especially 12th Street in that area. I think it's 12th Street.
And care centers also another option too.
They don't like the highway. They can get to two slices and, you know, when you're elderly like that, you go through a lot of hoops to avoid the highway. So, and I think in the letter we got today, the guy said, and I didn't even think about it, you know, golf carts use it too. And, I mean, 12th Street along behind the hospital there is really bad too. I mean, all those streets are.
And I, I think there may be a possibility if they're going to be investing in that building and maybe they allocate, you know, some brownfield funds to fix up that road. Maybe that's kind of, at that point, we can visit that situation.
Are we actually going to close it or are we going to just stop doing anything to it?
We're going to post that it's, well, I think ever since we found out it's private property, it's not appropriate to spend public funds on it, we'll post a sign stating it's private property. On our side.
And there is past practice for entities to apply to be, to give up their right-of-way, which I would imagine, I don't know what that does to property value, but that would be incumbent upon the owner to reach out to the city and initiate that process. But right now, we're out of compliance.
Right, and we can have some conditions for taking it on as well.
What's so important is that we're legally.
Well.
Yeah.
It is used, it's basically by use of public road. Now, I couldn't give the same argument with that North Water Street because it isn't used like that. I mean, it, maps, I mean, they accepted a right-of-way from maps and I wouldn't necessarily consider that a public road. How many people go down a dead-end road? So.
And that's what I mean. I'm curious about the due process or the process for that. So Mr. Conklin, I'm glad that you're here tonight to render an opinion.
Well, the city can certainly take steps to establish that as a public road.
Okay.
I think it'd be my suggestion to do that before you would leave it certified on your Act 51 map or expend public funds on it by either deed or easement or condemnation if the property owner wasn't willing or to go out and establish a public road. There's lots of policy reasons which your city manager or public works director are better able to evaluate as to whether or not you actually want to do that. Because then you have to start maintaining it and spending funds on it, you know, is it up to standard? So that's a bigger, broader policy question than just decertification, which is, does your Act 51 map match your current public road rights?
Have we been plowing it all along?
Yes.
We have. So it's being used year-round.
Yeah. It's a, it's a different circumstance. It really is.
Assuming I fully understood the attorney, I think that to be in compliance, we know that it's private and we have to decertify it. If the community's desire is to keep that road in the future, then there are steps we can take to, to get right-of-way as long as the property owner is willing. And then council would need to consider what the value and what the cost would be to upgrade that to make it safe and reconstruct it. I don't remember the exact number, but it was in the million-dollar ballpark. And the money that we had from that project, we've utilized on other street segments, but we still have plans to upgrade the top of that 15th and a portion of Maywood and a little bit of 14th so that there is a, we improve our connection to Vine Street, basically coming from Care Center Drive. So that's in the current transportation improvement plan.
I kind of feel once we decertify or give up something, we have a tendency not to ever get it back, whether it's green space or a road or whatever.
Is there like?
If we decertify that.
But we don't own it, it's private property.
But I think if he's willing to give, to chat with him or just to see.
But to bring the map into compliance now, we have to decertify.
Well, that's why I'm wondering.
Excuse me, I'm talking. Hey, can I finish, please?
I'm sorry.
You know, we can decertify it to bring it into compliance for Mr. McCula, for him to sign off. And then if the property owner wants to, wants to proceed with, you know, the deed, the deed it over or an easement, we can do that in the future. But the other thing is, it's at least a million dollars for that, for that section of road. It's terrible now. That, is the road used? Absolutely. But would I rather see a million dollars used on other streets like Washington or other areas that are more heavily trafficked? Absolutely. I mean, the attorney opinion is that it's, we're out of compliance. So I think at this point, we have to decertify it. And then if we want to go through the process later, and it's not like we're giving it up. It's going to be incumbent upon the owner, the new owner, hey, if the city, we can turn this, we can deed this to the city or give the city the right-of-way, the city will end up, you know, picking up some of the funds. But it's also nice to have them contribute a little bit of that. A million dollars is a lot of money. That's taxpayer money that not many people use. Some people, the people that use it absolutely is important, but a million dollars is a lot of money.
I agree it's a lot of money, but I, maybe, I mean, he's probably not going to come to us. So I think we'd have to set up someone that would go to them and negotiate and just see. I guess, I don't know, if you made an attempt to at least see if he wanted to and then we can decide at that point, no, we don't want it, but.
So you're saying it would be just a sign, there's not going to be ballards? Like blocking it, like what you put on other streets?
That's a possibility, but it was more, I think a sign was kind of the initial, potentially a ballard or a Jersey barrier or something like that.
I guess I'd kind of like to know because people can use it if there's just a sign at their own risk rather than a concrete block. And is there a middle ground, you know? Decertify it so we're in compliance. And then.
The sign would help let the people know, because I don't know if the people even, some of those people that live up there probably don't have any clue that that is, would be no longer a road. So that would be.
Yeah, it's, it's private property. It's basically like someone cutting through someone's driveway or, you know, parking lot or something like that.
Anybody else?
Nope.
Heather, would you please take a role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
No on that. No.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
No.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of awarding a contract to perform tree planting. Each year, the city partners with our citizens to plant trees within the city right-of-way. Once the number of trees has been determined, bids are accepted to plant these trees. This year, one bid was received from Anthony's Outdoor Service. The contract amount, based on current orders, is $10,348.82. At this time, council could take action to approve a contract with Anthony's Outdoor Service in the amount of $10,343.82 for the annual tree planting program. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take a role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of the sale of city-owned property Renaissance Lot 4. The city received an offer for the purchase, the parcel described as Renaissance Lot 4. The slot is part of Renaissance Park located in Manastee Township. A price of $18,000 was negotiated. The buyer is BOS Manufacturing LLC. They own the adjacent lot and they are interested in purchasing Lot 4 for the purpose of expansion to their current business. At this time, council could take action to approve the purchase agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute all necessary documents for the sale of Renaissance Lot Number 4. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I think when I went through the packet, your cover letter said $18,000, but in the purchase agreement, wasn't it a different amount?
They initially offered, yes, 15, but then on our counter was offered 18 and that's indicated on the last page.
Okay. Because I, I guess I.
Yeah, right here.
Guess I still won't see it.
How long has this?
Oh, there it is, okay. Thank you.
How long has this spot, lot been listed?
It's been listed with Mr. Canuti since 2018, but it's, we've had it at least for 20, 25 years, I believe.
Anybody else? Heather, would you please take a role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan. Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruzga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Considerations of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Compensation Commission, Historic District Commission, Housing Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals. Mayor and manager appointments require a motion, second, and voter support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second after all nominations are made. Council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives a majority support. The following applications have been received. Historic District Commission, two vacancies, one term ending 2/28/27 and one ending 2/28/28. The Purpose Historic Preservation Council Appointment, Chad LaFave, 7 Filer Street. The Housing Commission, one vacancy term ending 5/31/30. Purpose oversees senior low-income housing. Maril Appointment, Karen Goodman, 1925 12th Street. Zoning Board of Appeals, two vacancy terms ending 5/31/28. The Purpose hears appeals of zoning building issues. Maril Appointment, Marty Spalding, 354 First Street. At this time, mayor and council could take action to make appointments as noted in BUP. Is there a nomination for the Historic District Commission?
I'll nominate Mr. LaFave, 7 Filer Street, for the term ending 2/28/28 for the Historic District Commission.
Thank you. Heather, would you please take a role?
Councilmember Raditz.
LaFave.
Mayor Protem Smith.
LaFave.
Councilmember Lasky.
LaFave.
Mayor Sullivan.
LaFave.
Councilmember Keck.
LaFave.
Councilmember Ruzga.
LaFave.
Nomination was approved.
Thank you. I would like to appoint Karen Goodman to the term, to the Housing Commission, term ending 5/31/30. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion for the term ending 5/31/30.
Second?
I'll second that.
Heather, would you please take a role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Goodman.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Goodman.
Councilmember Lasky.
Goodman.
Mayor Sullivan.
Goodman.
Councilmember Keck.
Goodman.
Councilmember Rusga.
Goodman.
Motion approved.
Thank you. I would like to appoint Marty Spalding, three fifty-four, First Street, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term ending five thirty-one, twenty-eight. Is there a motion?
I, uh, make a motion to appoint Marty Spalding for the term ending five thirty-one, twenty-eight to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Heather, would you please take role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Spalding.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Spalding.
Councilmember Lasky.
Spalding.
Mayor Sullivan.
Spalding.
Councilmember Keck.
Spalding.
Councilmember Rusga.
Spalding.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Citizens comment. This is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or other areas of city involvement, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Okay, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to point out, um, the, I'd like to thank the NRBC for their work, and the other volunteers, and the DPW. At the cleanup day on, uh, this last weekend, as AJ mentioned, there was quite a bit of material collected. It's fourteen thousand one hundred sixty pounds of bulk material, and twelve thousand one hundred sixty-five pounds of unwanted paint for recycling, so very successful event, and.
The paint was out there?
Yeah.
Twelve thousand one hundred sixty-five pounds, so.
It's ton.
I know, uh, Andrew and Councilmember Lasky, you guys looked at a lot of that, so, um, but yeah, it was a good event, and, um, yeah, thank you, everyone.
It's a lot of paint.